Council always can start with a pledge of the regions. Chase, you're not going to have too many more of these. Would you start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Everyone should be objective.
Okay. Folks, did you have a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes from September the 27th? If you did and there are no corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Goodman. Do I have a second guarantee? Those in favor. Thank you all. As usual, the minutes for September 22nd and the 8th, September the 8th of the Board of Works are included in the packet for information purposes. We have no listed communications. They did include a couple of pieces of information. Some of it is redundant to anybody who was here last time. This mailing that we received, I believe David was speaking for the same included in the packet. Lake Manito is in trouble. It's entitled. And then also for information purposes, I've gotten a copy of the state of Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, the breakdown for our tax funds this next year. And if you'll look at it, the column, I believe is really interesting, is our economic development distribution. Just very quickly, the total EDIT funds for the county is 618,018. Then down the line, we are at 321,751, about 52 percent of that figure. The town of Akron is 33,573 is the distribution they receive, and that's about 5 percent of that 618,000 figure. Little town Fulton gets less than 1 percent, that's $6,000. And Kewanna, this next year, will get just right up 4 percent, 25,928. I think it's important that you have this information when we start talking about divvying out EDIT funds and such. So you've got a clearer picture of what we have to deal with. So that's for information purposes. We are going to have a public hearing in December for additional appropriations, which is the usual time to clear up the end of the year. As you know, SHADA doesn't have many appropriations throughout the year, but we do try to get things cleaned up at the end of the year. Okay. We'll also be discussing the ARPA fund and Minno Creek Maintenance Fund at that time as well. Don't have any old business. Then it gets down to new business. David is here tonight. He's wearing two hats. You're going to wear FedCo and LMA, right?
Right.
Okay. You can do it. I know. I've got confidence in you.
Good.
He's got a guest with him tonight from HUB. It's Ryan Chacey. Ryan, I've met before. You give Heather my best. Tell her we missed her tonight.
Thank you, Will.
David, I will just turn it over to you to explain what Ryan's here for and everybody has to say.
Sure. So as you all know, FedCo went through the process, the last almost year of all the interviews and determining what does FedCo look like, what's counting, and over and over again in all those meetings, we heard housing, 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 whether we were talking to the schools and the fact that they were having issues with teachers because of housing or industry having a hard time getting workers because they had nowhere to come. So we started looking, okay, how best to deal with housing. So we put together, and as you know, you all were invited to attend the meetings that we had out the Learning Center. And Ryan and his firm came in. Their firm is unique in that they do this study, but then they also stay with you and help you through that process. I'll allow him to explain that a little bit. But we looked at putting together a coalition of, okay, what do we need? What do we think? We all think we need housing, and that's as far as we know. So we decided, okay, we need an expert to tell us. So that's why we contacted Ryan's firm. In the second meeting, they came to the first meeting. Second meeting, Chase was there, Mayor was there. I think Brian was at the second one. There was $80,000 committed at that meeting by the different organizations in the room. So it's about $130,000 for the two-year study. So we felt good that we got that kind of jump from the people in the room when we started. And we met with the county council last week, and they are going to support us. They wanted time to look and see what they had left in their budget, that they made a commitment that they would help. So we're here tonight. Akron committed $5,000 to the study last night. So we think what we are is about $20,000 shy, so $10,000 a year for the next two years to be able to sign the contracts and get this done. So that is the consideration we're talking for. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you if you want to take a few minutes and just explain what you guys do and the process.
Sure. I'd be happy to. Thank you for the invitation, Mayor, to be here tonight. I appreciate that. And, you know, I understand that the proposal that we presented has been circulated, so I won't go real deep, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that. I'll give you kind of an overview. So my organization is the Housing Resource Hub, and we're actually a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are based out of Fort Wayne, have been working with local communities across the state since 2008. We did business originally as a high-performance government network, and then as our housing work has really taken over, we have kind of gone, same organization, but renamed and repositioned ourselves to be able to work with communities. And we got into this work, Heather Presley-Cullen, who's our chief executive officer, has a lengthy background in housing, and I've worked with communities for a long, long time now. And communities have been calling and saying, we need help. We need housing study. And they said, well, we're not sure you really do need a housing study. We think that, through these conversations, why communities are trying to tackle this issue is because it's an economic development issue, and they ultimately want to see new housing units come online to support the workforce and to meet that demand. And so we looked long and hard and have put together a system that is predicated on three main parts. And so we call a housing strategy because a strategy is designed to be implemented. And that's what we will stay along for the two-year period to do, is help you to implement this. So the three main pieces are, number one, there is a data collection piece, right? We are not going to go into this without having a clear path that's backed by data. But as opposed to traditional housing study sorts of things that look backwards over trends and new units and so forth, backwards, we engage a firm that has a product that's called a market potential analysis. And this is a firm that they're actually out of New Jersey. They've done these across the country for about 25 years. They've proven to be really, really accurate. It looks forward at what is the market potential in a given community. And market potential includes what are the number of units that can be supported, the price point, the type of unit, and who is going to live there. And this is based on a lot of IRS data and other data that they have that they're able to collect. And so they're able to then give us, and in this case, it would provide that information countywide with each of the main municipalities broken out. So we would have a countywide picture as well as a picture individually here for Rochester and the other communities that would be participating. That would provide us with somewhat of a roadmap to say, this is what the market will support, and how does that align with our current state where we are right now? And so we will want to be part of this process, local employers, local realtors, local banks, those who are part of the housing system that's here. And the employers, well, so that's the data collection piece. Once we have that roadmap, then we want to engage the employers because we don't want to just identify housing opportunities, even go so far as to bring new units online, and then not have those be what the workforce wants. And so we want to understand from those major employers, how many of them, you know, most of the larger ones have quantified how many of their employees live either 15 minutes seems to be kind of the national metric, more than 15 minutes away from work. A lot of them also will know how many currently live outside the county because they are retention risks. And the larger employers will even have a calculation usually in terms of how much does it cost to replace someone when they leave? And so we want to base it on that data because we're going about this to strengthen the communities, but also strengthen them with the tie of workforce and making sure we have that workforce component. We will then help to set up a housing program countywide with those employers to make sure that we're meeting the needs that those employees have. And so in other communities, that has taken the form of things like bringing a new local down payment assistance tool available, something that is a barrier for those employees and what we hear there. The third component of this is actually looking to identify, how can we bring new units online? And so we will have conversations with each of the communities that are participating to say, do you have sites that you would like to see developed? And are those sites currently held by developers, or are they held by the city or private folks or other agencies? And then understanding, we will, as a steering committee that will be part of leading this effort, prioritizing those sites and actually doing the work to result in development. And Mayor, you heard at the meeting that Heather and I attended some examples of what that's looked like in other communities. But we work essentially as an arm of the community. That's the reason for the lengthy engagement of two years, is because we have found that communities, if we just collect data and hand it over, most do not have the capacity to be able to implement that and see the results that they want. And so I often encourage communities to think of us as your housing department, if you had one, that is kind of an extension of you for that two-year time period. So that's a high-level overview. Again, I'm happy to delve into any part of that, but wanted to at least provide that.
I think one of the lessons that I took away from our meeting, our first meeting, is the fact that you're not a consultant that comes in and throws some information at us and picks up the check and leaves and we never see him. You're going to take this from cradle to the end, and that's what we need. I think we, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a general consensus in the room, we don't know what we don't know. And you folks are going to bring us some information we're not even real sure about how to go out and get. It's going to be more than you need X housing. It's going to tell us what type of housing we're going to need. Is it going to be single-family homes that you need more of than apartments? Am I not right? You're going to give us a real breakdown of, here's what your community's like. And, gosh, I hate to tell you this, but, you know, I've been involved with consultants for a lot of years, and we used to say, a consultant was anybody who was 20 miles away from home and had a briefcase. And some of those things come out as disasters because they leave. But I really like the fact that you're going to be around to help whatever we decide to come to fruition.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I've also made a few calls. I didn't just fall off the pickle truck. I did go out. You're a nice guy. Heather's great. I made a few calls.
Good.
Anybody? I think too, Ted, a point to follow up on yours, not only will they tell us what we need, they'll tell us where we need it.
True.
And I think that's another thing that they really bring to the table, is that they may come back and say, you need this in this part of your county, this in this part, and really help the pieces.
This may go to Akron.
Yeah. So I think that's a real helpful dynamic too that they bring to the table.
Good point. Good point.
And to your point, Mayor, if I may, I mean, one of the things that we really enjoy about our work is the longer-term relationships with the communities. I mean, as you've probably found out, if you've called around, I mean, many of the communities we've worked with for many, many years now because...
They still know you.
Yeah. They've been very, very happy with the results, and we really enjoy working there and continuing to, you know, see success, build more success. And so, you know, hope that that would be a result that we would have here as well, is to really have a strong relationship and for you to feel good about the outcomes, as well as us to be proud of what's been built.
Well, if I might, that long-term relationship, some of the things I heard were that this is a dynamic subject. It doesn't stay constant or stagnant. It changes. And you guys are around from here to here, so you can help kind of navigate through some of those changes within communities. That I liked. I liked that a lot.
Well, you know, we've had situations where, you know, we have started off with the community preferring one thing and us thinking that one thing was going to work. And, I mean, just in the last few years, the housing market itself has changed drastically, and so that has changed quite a bit in terms of what we do and what the needs are. I mean, we're looking ultimately at two market gaps, a development gap that exists, that's why housing's not being built right now, even though there's a kind of general consensus there's a need. It's too risky. And then there's a gap on the buyer and renter side in terms of when new units come on, how do they get into those? And so we want to look, and those are both, as you point out, very dynamic issues that are going to change as market conditions change and other factors. And so, you know, that's why the extended model is what it is.
Anybody have any questions for Ryan?
Economic development.
Not the mayor's fund?
Nope. Not the mayor's fund. I mean, he could offer it.
We've beaten that one to death.
Oh, there she is.
I asked about it the other day, and her answer was, no.
I didn't have to think about it, John.
Yeah, EDIT funds. But that truly is what EDIT funds are about ultimately.
So you have funds there to make that proposal?
Yes.
$10,000 a year over the next two?
Yes. You have enough if you want to do it upfront right now.
You know, it would have been, and this is another reason I asked this out, it would have been nice if we'd known what was on the county's mind. Like I say, we get 52 percent of what they get, and I'm of the ilk that instead of just saying, this dog is the same size as this dog, we need to look at the facts and the figures. And we aren't the same. We've talked about this with other EDIT distributions. There should be, you know, little Akron here. Did they commit $5,000 for two, each year?
$2,500 per year.
Okay. I'll track this.
$5,000 total.
Because I... When I talk of commitment, that's over the two years.
Yeah. $2,500 each year. Well, that makes a little more sense. That $5,000 was 15 percent of their EDIT funds.
Yeah.
So, you know, going seven and a half makes a little more sense for them.
And you're short 10 or 20?
10 per year.
10 per year. 20, 20. Okay. Thank you.
Our ask at the county was 25, a minimum of 25. And so they were going to go back and see what they have. We're going back next month, and then obviously we'll know better by then too, because we didn't have Akron's number until last night. So my hope is that they'll find at least 25.
Well, as I mentioned to you, the study, the FedCo had done for reorganization and such, and what was the lady's name? I'm sorry.
Kimberley.
Kimberley.
Kimberly Pickler.
60-some meetings total. There were quite a few meetings, and I believe it was said that every one of those meetings, this subject came up.
Housing, housing, housing.
Well, that tells me that there's private sector folks out there that are willing to jump into this and probably put some skin in the game as well.
That's why I say 80,000 at that meeting.
You've got 80,000. And that was just private, wasn't it?
The foundation was included in that.
Okay. The foundation was included.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know. I mean, we could put you over the top, I guess, for contracting Ryan, but I'd sure like to have county in this, and if they come back and put more money in it, what are you going to do? Tip Ryan?
I...
I know you like the sound of that.
We will not ask for more than what we need.
I'd like to see the county do it.
Well, that was an interesting start at that, you know?
They're always...
But like I say, our ask was 25,000.
They always, they ask, but they're always lagging behind and kind of waiting for us to make a first decision. I'd like, before I make any decision, I'd like to see the county do it.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's only fair.
Are you saying 25 and then another 20 from us for a total?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. 25,000 from them was our ask.
Okay.
And they voted in favor. They just need to verify that they had the funds. They just need to check their balances. But they, that was their, they said they would have no problem doing that if they had the funds. But they wanted to check the funds, and then they voted on it.
Well, I know that, and that's why I said to you over, when I was over at Lighters Ford last week, and had three commissioners there for the RTC kickoff in Lighters Ford, they were under the impression that that money had been approved and was going to be distributed.
One of the commissioners was there that night. Rick was there that night, and there was nothing allocated that night. And when they asked what our gap was at that time, I told them it was $50,000. That's where we worked that.
Yeah. And that was meant...
And I said that we were coming here this week, that you had tried to implement you and the county council to have a joint.
Joint meeting.
And it didn't work out, so that's why we were there last week and here this week. We told them last week, we actually told them we're going to be asking you for 12,5, that since Akron came, it's going to be the last stop, I guess.
Well, to make it perfect, we didn't get any response back to that offer of a common meeting. And I think some of it might have had it done.
Well, I think it came back to Ryan's schedule, because if you recall, it was going to be last week. You were going to try to do it on their schedule, and their schedule didn't permit it. That's why it didn't happen.
Well, before we left the meeting, we were talking about tonight as well. But in all fairness, you knocked out one of the players, so it might not have been the first top of the list as to what we're thinking about. So, yeah, that didn't come together. When are they, when are you going to go back again?
It's their November meeting, and I don't know their schedule. I try not to attend these regularly.
I know.
It's become a bad habit.
I know. Well, I'll have to be nice to you.
I'm sorry, December. I'm sorry, December. The months are going quicker than I know.
Did you get your answer, Chase?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Just a course of all that.
And you need 20,000 to...
That's where our gap is right now because of...
If we just allocate 20, as we're willing to do, it doesn't matter. With the county, you know, the county comes back and says 15, then the hand's out for 10 more somewhere else. You know, I don't see the, I really don't see the, I don't want to arbitrarily delay it. You know, the county's going to do what the county's going to do. You know, what are we willing to do? Is this worth 20,000 to us for Rochester? Or, I just don't see the point to plan another month, you know, and we're not committing more than what the ask is if we do it tonight.
Okay.
And if the county comes back and it doesn't go, then no one's going to keep the money. It's going to come back, but I'm pretty confident they're going to pony up.
No, wait a minute. Okay, you're saying commit to the first year? Is that what you're saying, and then see what the county?
Commit the 20.
20.
10 over two years.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, we're not, if the county doesn't fill it, you know, either go somewhere else for the shortfall, or the project dies and the money goes back.
So your ask is still 50?
My ask here tonight is 10 and 10.
Well, I understand that, but your ask...
Well, we have 45, or the 5,000 from Akron.
Akron, so it's 45,000.
So the 25 from them and 20 from you is the, if you want to look at it that way.
Okay.
And Akron kicked in the 5.
I don't know what their timetable is. I mean, if another month doesn't kill it, but I, you know, I don't, it's something we could take care of.
What we are trying to do is make sure we have a commitment so that we can start the first of the year, because with Ready 2 coming and those dollars, we want to try to have things in place where if there's an opportunity for any additional state dollars, we're in a position where we can start looking at those. So that's why we're trying to hit first of the year, so we get this thing off and going.
What was your ask for the county?
25.
25, over the two years.
Over the two years. Okay.
Well, it seems like based on what we've heard tonight, comparing to what the means have been and continue to be, this is where we want to go.
Oh, it's a good venture. There's no doubt about that. It's a good venture. We're not, and we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars out of our EDIT funds.
Do I make a motion that we do the 10,000 over the next two years for 20,000 total?
Certainly our colleagues will buy into the, they certainly have that kind of money from their EDIT funds.
Yeah. They didn't anticipate a problem.
Yeah.
They just, they didn't want to vote it till they knew for sure that...
What we would do.
I don't think that at all. I mean, they were 100 percent in support of it and said, we will support it. They just, was there someone missing that night?
Christine Schreiber wasn't, the auditor wasn't.
Oh, the auditor wasn't.
The auditor wasn't. That was the problem.
He's the one that was adding the figures.
Yeah. So they just said...
Because that seems strange, that that's, it wasn't that big a number.
That's why I say, they were like, we're sure we can do it, but we can't tonight because we can't verify the funds.
I think they were planning to look at what their balance was and give it as a whole donation instead of over two years, was the way they talked. And that's why they wanted to verify what the balance was.
Do you have a preference on how we...
I do not, because I believe, other than I... I am pretty certain that we could do it all this year based on appropriations, so I don't have a preference.
You're talking about the 10, right?
10. We could do the full 20 if we wanted to, or do it in January, then I know for sure that we have. I mean, if we do, essentially, if you guys commit, whether it's 10 over two years or 20 total, if I pay it out in January, we're fine.
I wouldn't say 10 over two years.
I wouldn't.
Are you saying 10 this year and 10 next year?
23, 24.
23, 24.
If you're going to do it, you're going to do it. Now, if it comes January 1 and just say it comes up short, what happens after? You come up short.
We will not come up short. It's a $10,000 start and then 5,000 a month. And with the 80,000 that we already have committed from private, I just... I just, I'm a little old-fashioned. I don't wanna sign a contract while I know I have the money.
It's a good way.
So, that's why we're looking for commitments. And that's why if you wanna do ten and ten, it doesn't matter.
But on, on the same token, as we said, there were sixty-some meetings where you had some pretty good-sized players saying, "We need this kind of." And, I mean, a couple of those big employers who've said some things like that haven't been approached yet. And I'm sure they're.
There, there've been others approached. But I think, too, as we get into this, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for people to give money. You know, there, there's gonna be a lot of needs coming when we get to development, when we get to all that. So, I, I think there will be opportunities to, that this is to get the ball going.
If, if I could just add, I mean, in my experience working with a number of communities, what you've got lined up is, is really impressive. I mean, a number of communities, because you're exactly right. Momentum builds for this as we start to do that. And the employers then wanna jump on and believe that there are a lot of different ways that we will need them to jump on to support between projects and program, you know, programs we may wanna fund and other things. So, you're in a really great spot to have this lined up. And then I think we can continue to find good fits. Oftentimes, it's, it, it really works out for the best because then we get those employers plugged into a niche that only they can fill, really, so.
I'll second Todd's motion.
Todd made a motion.
Can I clarify? Do you wanna do it? Ten per year?
Yes. Make a motion to give the ten thousand per year for the next two years for the full twenty thousand ask.
Seconded by Goodman. Those in favor? And that she handles.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can't wait to work with you, Ryan. It'll be very interesting.
Thank you, likewise.
David, so you don't have to sit around all night. You won't move right into LMA and talk about your LMA presentation?
Sure. As Mayor mentioned, there was that handout, and I'm sure John got one. And, so, the, did you have one, too, Brian?
Oh, yeah.
All right, good.
File thirteen did right there.
Hey, it's been this nice sturdy Alisa water.
So, I, a couple of us on the LMA board were contacted earlier this year and provided that front graph, the, the trendline chart. I, I contacted the person that sent it to me and asked for clarification of data and some additional information. I never got a response. So, when that mailing came out, obviously, it's saying that Lake Manito is dying. So, LMA, as you might imagine, our phones started ringing. Everything we do goes through and is permitted by the DNR. You know, we don't, we don't do any aquatic plant treatment without being permitted. They review everything. Tom Bakula is the lakes biologist that oversees Lake Manito. I laid down, I, up on your, on your platform there, I laid down the response that I got from Tom Bakula from the DNR. I contacted him right away, because that's what we do. If someone brings concern, we contact the experts. I, I am not a lakes biologist, so we go to the experts. We, that's who LMA relies on. Clearly, we all, as a community, have a great vested interest in keeping Lake Manito the best it can be. As you will see, you have Tom's full response. The lake is not dying. Tom feels good about what's going on at Lake Manito. Clearly, when we had a decade of hydrilla kill and we had to eradicate all the aquatic plants in Lake Manito for a decade, that is very hard on the lake. There was no option at that time, from my understanding. I was not involved at that time. But if you look at some of the data that DNR collected during that time in IDIM, you will see that clearly is affected when you don't have the aquatic plants to filter and do all that. Aquatic plants are coming back. The, the mailing would lead you to believe that we are eradicating huge amounts of the aquatic plants in Lake Manito. Last year, I think we treated somewhere around four, five acres, I think, or four to five percent of the, of the lake. So, a very small percentage in very defined areas. So, the, the crux of it is, is you'll read back, that the lake is doing well. There are, like every lake that has twenty-eight thousand acre watershed coming in from outside our county, nutrients and that coming in. We, we're gonna battle that all the time. And we're doing what we can. But I want you all to know the lake is not dying. That there, that front chart references IDIM data. I have been on the phone with IDIM, multiple people at IDIM. They do not agree with that, that chart either. So, Lake Manito is not dying is what you all need to know. So, it, I, I just felt was, you all needed to hear that since it falls inside the city.
Well, and I appreciate that. I mean, I can't imagine the response LMA must have gotten from lake residents. You know, when I read this thing, I thought, gee, I made a mistake investing in property here on the lake. And, and this thing, the way it was written, it's pretty definitive when it talks about what LMA should be doing. It's, it's pretty definitive. But then it comes down to a conclusion, "There may still be time to avert the ecological disaster." It just scares the becheches out of people. There may be time, like it's imminent. So, I, I just, I just appreciate that you've come to clear this up. I hope this gets into a lot of homes. I, I would think that some of the activity you've had in church and such may slow down with Tom's assessment out there about.
Also, LMA did a newsletter mailing that went out at the end of last week that all lake residents should have received. And it has a copy of that email in it, as well as other information. But we're doing what we can to battle that with fact.
Well, and that, that's good. I mean, I think we found out in weeks, past weeks, fifty percent of the lake residents are not permanent residents. So, some of these may be in mailboxes someplace, and you're still gonna get questions, I guarantee you. This is, this is pretty volatile.
They haven't let up yet. To the point, you know, okay, people say, "Should I sell my house while I can?"
Yeah, yeah.
So, it, it's an unfortunate situation.
Well, we appreciate your coming to clear it up. Anybody up here have any questions for David?
Don't, don't sell the house, John.
Yeah, don't sell the house, John.
I've been there too long to move anywhere else.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna redo on Golden Pond and put it on in the starting row. But is it safe to say, or is it safe to tell folks, anybody who would like more information should contact LMA?
Sure. That, that's no problem.
Okay.
You know, we, like I say, we're letting the experts speak for us. It's, it's right there. It goes through and addresses the mailing and the, how the DNR biologist that oversees this lake, how he sees things.
Well, you know, going back fifteen, sixteen years when the hydrilla all started out and the DNR's involvement and Indiana, even Indiana Department of Environmental Management, everybody that was involved and came here for meetings and such, they said some of what was pointed out in here was just gonna be the natural coming of treating this thing. I think at the time, this was the only lake in Indiana that had.
I believe that's right.
Had been hit with hydrilla. And they were taking it extremely seriously. And they were going at it academically. And their goal was to eradicate it and let the lake come back to its beautiful, natural state. And it looks like we're just on that path.
We, the, the fishing's improving. I was on the boat with Bakula electrofishing last summer. They're monitoring everything. It's a work-in process. It's not dying.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You gentlemen don't have to stick around. It's a long trip back to Fort Wayne. It's nice seeing you again.
Nice to see you, too. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance resolutions.
Yeah, you bet. Appreciate it.
Ordinance zero-six dash twenty-one-two, creating MVH restricted fund. That's the street department, the restricted fund. Shada, do you wanna take that to hand?
Sure. Basically, what this is, is a few years ago, state of Indiana told us that we need, or the, our state legislators decided that we needed to take fifty percent of our MVH fund and put it into a restricted fund that was only for preservation of our roads and preservations and maintenance. I'm not gonna take a deep dive. Y'all can read that part of it. What their definition of that is, does not include snow plowing. I'll just put that out there. That was a huge discussion for two years.
Well, that was a huge shock.
So, with that said, on, on the positive note of that, the state doing this really didn't hurt us because we do paving every year. And we budget four hundred thousand dollars every year for paving. So, this automatically, i- it's okay because all of our restricted funds go towards that, which meets the qualifications. What happened was, is they said we needed to create a sub-fund underneath our MVH fund. Fabulous, if your general ledger system allows you to do that. Ours did not. So, I retrofitted into ours a separate cash account to keep track. Well, when I pay the bills, I can only pay from one cash account. I can't change which one midstream I'm paying from. So, it just, and then it also says I can't transfer monies. A lot of restrictions with the restricted fund, sub-fund. And finally, I just, I decided after talking to the state board of accounts, you know what? Why don't we just create a restricted fund and call it done? It's gonna be easy. I can pay the bills the way I need to. All the revenue goes in there. It, it's just, it's cleaner. I, granted, it's not a sub-fund. It's a fund all by itself. But I think it's gonna be cleaner. So, that's why we're bringing this, so that I can get that, all that restricted money goes into this new fund.
Well, it brings some clarity to the budget, too.
And it, yeah. I mean, it brings clarity, well, not really. I mean, it doesn't really.
It's gonna be a line item. Why, right?
Yeah, but it's not really a budget. The only thing budgeted for is gonna be paving. That's it. I mean, it's.
It's gonna be visible on, as a line item, correct?
Where the clarity's gonna come in is the revenue being receiveded into the restricted fund for audit purposes and all the expense going out to pay for paving. That's it. Beyond that, this fund will get used for nothing else. So, that's the only clarity you get. As far as budgeting for the actual paving and all of that stuff still comes out of our regular MVH.
True. But, I mean, you're going to affect the MVH fund from what we have had in the past. In other words, there are only gonna be certain things, as you mentioned, this, this, this category can be used for. Whereas before, we had a little more latitude. Isn't, isn't Duane having to capture some of his labor hours in certain categories rather than? Well, then that, that changed because we were gonna be restricted.
No, no, no. That's if we are a population of fifteen thousand or more. That's for, the county has to do that because they meet a certain threshold budgetary-wise. We don't meet that threshold to do that. That's, that is a, how are you gonna be? It's an annual report that the municipalities that are fifteen thousand population or greater has to do to submit to the state for that, to capture those labor hours and stuff. We don't have to do that.
So, if he goes over his budget for snow removal, he can accommodate some of those funds?
Wrong terminology. His labor hours are lumped together under one, in, in one category. So, his labor hours, whether it's for plowing or whatnot, it doesn't matter because that we get our real tax revenue, we get property tax revenue, and we get the other fifty percent of the MVH. This is only the monies that we receive from the state of Indiana that are the MVH monies. We get additional monies for the street department that cover those costs. That's why we don't have to, to restrict it. Or, we don't have to categorize and itemize each one of this.
Okay. Well, I know we kicked that around at one time. He was gonna have to document.
Yes.
Where his men were putting their hours and such.
Yes. Because we thought we were gonna meet, but we don't meet that threshold to have to do that.
Okay.
Now, I say that only to say this. It's coming, I'm sure. Because every time they implement something for larger communities, at some point down the road, it usually impacts us. So, I would say, hopefully, by the time I'm done, retired, and out of here, they can do it.
Well, point being, right, it's coming. And the point being, they always go towards a taxable category like the MVH folks.
They do, yeah.
Yeah. It just makes it difficult to do anything extra than what are the actual basics for the street department.
And, and again, because our MVH fund by statute and ordinance is property tax-supported, they can only do so much with restricting what we can do with the, those monies and those expenditures. This MVH piece of that was one that they controlled because that is generated by gas tax.
Wheel tax.
I can't think. There's, yeah, some of those other state levy taxes. So, they have more authority over that particular component of revenue than the rest of it.
Okay.
If that makes any sense. So, so that's what this is, is just creating that fund for clarity.
Which will make it easier for audit purposes.
Correct. Yep.
Do I have a motion for first reading of ordinance zero-six dash twenty-two? By title only? Do we have?
So, by title.
Motion by Garrett, seconded by Goodman, seconded. Those in favor, by title only? Okay, sir.
Ordinance number six dash twenty-two, ordinance creating MVH restricted fund.
Okay. We do have five. Could I get a motion for the second reading by title only?
So moved.
Second. That was Fitz, Water, and Goodman. Those in favor? Okay, second reading.
Ordinance number six dash twenty-two, ordinance creating MVH restricted fund.
And we have five, so I can ask for a suspension of the, the rules and have the third reading by title, by title only.
So moved.
Moved by Wilson, seconded by Garrett. Those in favor? Okay, sir. One more time.
Ordinance number six dash twenty-two, ordinance creating MVH restricted fund.
Okay, any questions? Those in favor of passing ordinance zero-six dash.
Make a motion.
Goodman? Who, who sent it? Wilson? Those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Six dash twenty-two.
Shada?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, you had this last month. We'd have a quorum. Is it a problem that it's dated the twenty-fifth of October?
I will, I will, yes. Thank you. I will change that to.
Tell me done three, you don't remember.
Got it.
Looks like the resolutions are that way as well.
Yes.
You wanna change those as well?
Yeah, I will change those. The ones that go in the book. Well, the only ones that change are passed and adopted.
I don't think you didn't have all of them on there, did you?
Yeah, I did. Because y'all don't normally stand me up.
It's the first time that ever happened. Okay. We've got a couple resolutions, which we need one reading of the resolution. Resolution ten dash twenty-two, water pilot. Shada, would you explain that?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
You might as well blend in eleven.
I am. Both of these are the same, essentially. They're for the utilities. What the pilot is, is that's payment in lieu of taxes. So, because they're municipally-owned utilities, instead of paying property taxes, they pay, they give, pay us directly as opposed to paying property taxes, goes to the county, and they get submitted to us twice a year on a monthly basis or annual basis, however it's established. Then the utilities just pay the city those, what's estimated as those taxes. It's a process we have been doing. When I look back through records, the last, or the establishing ordinance, which I don't believe it was actually establishing, I think it was a revision of, was from the seventies.
Yeah.
So we've been doing this. And from my best research, what I can find is, the last time the dollar amount was adjusted would have been during a bond issue in, I believe it was the nineties. So we've been paying the same amount every, or the, I'm sorry, the utilities have been paying the same amount to the city, six thousand dollars a month since probably the mid-nineties. The recommendation I took to the respective boards, the water board and board of public works and safety, was just to leave the amount the same. It's what our superintendents have kind of budgeted everything on. They take this money and transfer it over to their depreciation fund. So it kind, or, I'm sorry, they pay it to us as part of their operating budget, and then we receipt that in and retain that for general purposes. So there's, I, when I spoke to the boards, we think there may be a revision of this down the road, but we have to have an assessment of our utility operations, of our buildings, our properties, and all of that stuff. So we just said, just go with what we've been paying for right now, and then we'll worry about the rest later. But we wanted to get a new, fresh resolution on the books so that when we make these pay, or when they make these payments to the city, then it's all clear-cut, outlined detail. Because I couldn't find this document anywhere.
Anywhere, yeah.
On anything.
Yeah. It's one of those, one of those old pieces of paper filed away someplace. This is the way we've always done it.
Yeah. And from what I can read, it was from a bond ordinance. And back in the day, the bond ordinances would usually outline these things. So then you have to read the whole bond ordinance and find one little piece of information. So this just cleans it up, makes it clean. Utilities are happy with it. And then it's on the books.
One thing, one thing that happens here is, these things are the result of our audit. They came up during the audit, and Shada has always been very good at cleaning up whatever there was to clean up. I say that, you know, what we deal with a lot of times is like peeling an onion. There's always a layer underneath. And she's done a great job with the, through the guidance of the auditors, cleaning some of these things up. For those of you out there watching and are confused, it isn't just all city. The utilities are separate from the tax-paying, tax-supported side. So when you talk about water and sewer, they run on utility fees. That's what your water bill supports. They're not getting the tax money. So they're operating by fees. So they are actually, correct me if I use the wrong term there, but for layman's purposes, they're actually renting or leasing from the city certain aspects, and that's where these payments come from. We can talk about layman's view of this.
Well, yeah.
Because someone would say, why is the water and sewer department paying X amount to the city every year?
It's their taxes. It's their, if they were to pay property taxes-
They owe it to us.
They owe it to us. If they were a private entity, so if they were privately owned-
Correct.
-utilities, they would be paying these property taxes. So this is just because they're municipally-owned, it's in lieu of that. They just pay us directly.
But they're a different animal than the tax-supported side. Okay. We do have a resolution ten dash twenty two. And I'd say a resolution eleven dash twenty two, one supporting water pilot and one supporting sewage pilot. Do I have a motion for reading resolution ten dash twenty two?
Do it in its entirety? Would you do it in its entirety?
No, you can do it by title. You don't even have to read the resolutions. You can just vote an attorney perk it there. See, he just came back.
Yeah, he's coming on now.
I was going to say, I was worried about him there for a while.
But, yeah. Yeah. But, but based on what attorney Perkins and I have talked about with resolutions, they're not like an ordinance.
I'll make the motion that we read it. Resolution ten twenty two by title only.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Okay, sir.
Resolution ten dash twenty two, resolution authorizing payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Is there a motion for passing resolution ten dash twenty two?
Excuse me? Who made the motion, I'm sorry.
Goodman and Thompson, seconded. Those in favor? Okay, it's passed. Now for resolution eleven dash twenty two, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, good. Garrett's made the motion. Do I have a second to read it by title only?
Second.
Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Very good. You're on, sir.
Resolution eleven dash twenty two, resolution authorizing payment in lieu of taxes.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to accept? Twenty, eleven days, twenty twenty two, so moved. Goodman, seconded by Todd. Those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. The December meeting, we will have a discussion on resolution twelve dash twenty two, which is ARPA funds and Minno Creek work for additional appropriations. The project is finished, by the way. It's, it's working very well out there. So we'll move right on to the department reports pretty quickly. Who do I got in the back? Clear in the back in the dark. Randy, are you back there?
No.
No?
He was looking at it right here.
You guys are in?
That's it.
All right. She must know where you think you are. Guess, well, guess we're doing good to get the council here, so.
It seems like that sometimes, huh?
There he goes. All right, he's on set. Okay. Chief Butler, you want to take the floor?
Good evening. Uh, the month of October, structure fires, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Mutual aid fires, one in Wayne Township, one in Henry Township. Auto fire alarms, one in the city. Vehicle fires, one in Rochester Township. Burn complaints, three in the city. Brush fires, two in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, one in Newcastle Township. Grain bin fire, one in Rochester Township. Landfill fire, one in Richland Township. Dryer fire, one in Richland Township. Gas leak, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Accidents, three in the city, one in Richland Township, one in Rochester Township. Medical assists, sixteen in the city, five in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Lift assists, three in the city. CO checks, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Service calls, one in Rochester Township. Cancelled calls, one in the city, one in Henry Township, one in Rochester Township. That should total fifty-five calls, and we conduct it one night of training.
Chief, would you take just a moment and explain what, what you're working on with the CPR program?
Sure. The mayor kind of came up with this idea maybe of, how can we reach more people? I'm affiliated with a group up at South Bend through Notre Dame football that, they did a whole, they did all the, basically all the eighth grades in Mishawaka area. So they did seventeen schools, all their eighth graders. They utilized the South Bend Cubs baseball field, the outfield. They brought two sections in. So in one day, they taught seventeen hundred kids hands-only CPR. So I got with this group. I wasn't able to assist in, in the training that day, but I got with the group, tried to get lessons learned. So we have ordered mannequins that are inflatable, that each student will get to, to keep with them. The eighth grades to target because at that age group, they're more apt to go ahead and take this tool and show at least three other people. High school kids, they're going to get this, throw it in the backseat of the car, they go home. And what you do is, we'll tell you how, and I'll think of it for them. There we go. But the eighth grade's the target one. So after the Christmas break, I'm going to get several volunteers. I've met, I met with superintendent, I met with the principal, and I met with the health teacher. And so after Christmas break, this is their health class, it's kind of key on CPR. With the events back, when tennis started during the practice, we all know what happened there. So the course today are all heightened and on board for this. So we will go in, it'll be about an hour. I'm going to try to get about, break them down about forty, groups of forty. We'll use auxiliary gen. There's a video. They'll, we'll go over the video, we'll explain what CPR does, and then we'll have them practice doing CPRs. These, these mannequins are pretty neat. Like I said, they're inflatable, got a hard chest, and there's actually a clicker in there. So they have to suppress that two inches in order to get the click. So they know they're going to be doing effective CPR. Pretty impressive for a thirty-eight-dollar tool. The city did fund this, so the kicker of this is that each kid's going to get to keep this kit. So he can take it home, show his parents. And inside the video, it goes over more. It'll cover choking, it'll cover child CPR with breaths, and then it'll cover the AED. So we don't have enough time to really orientate them to all these concepts, but the biggest thing is the hands-only CPR to save a life. So I'm pretty excited about this. I've put a lot of man-hours in so far, but I can't wait for the execution phase of it. I said, I met with the in-focus group up at Mishawaka. They were great, a lot of information. I'd like to see it grow into Tippy Valley and Argus. Working on funding, I said, funding was solved easily for me this year, but expanding it, that'll be an issue. And in focus is going to have some ideas for me to take this on. Hopefully, the benefit the community sees from this, we'll get, we'll get some donations from the hospital or some clinics or some, some doctors will step forward to assist with this program in the future. Another thing we're doing at RFD, along with the CPRs, we're getting a handful of the CPR certified. We're hoping this stimulates more interest in the community. So instead of just relying on Lutheran to provide the classes, we are going to go ahead and have instructors at RFD where we can do that. And we're going to get the city back up to speed in getting all the city employees CPR certified as well. So a lot of things happening the first year. Been a lot of man-hours, but excited, I can't, I said, I can't wait to see the outcome with the interaction with the eighth graders after Christmas break.
It's wonderful, Tom, and I appreciate you taking, taking the lead for that. You're natural to do that. And this all came about, obviously, over Jake Freeman and what happened on that tennis, or tennis practice. It became apparent to me that we've got one of those boxes sitting on the wall out there with AED on it. Now, you're sure I know how to open the box? And we need to all be in the loop and aware of how something like that is handled. Yeah, we're going to have several folks here go through it. I want to go through it. If any of you would care to go through it, please let us know, and we will make it available as well for you folks. One life was saved this last year because somebody knew what to do. Thank you, Tom. We just, we're just going to keep that ball rolling. Any questions, Tom? Chief shots?
Well, for the month of October, there were twenty-seven accidents. We issued twenty-four warnings for forty-nine offenses, thirty-nine case reports, five-hundred-and-thirty-three calls for service, twenty-one lockouts, ten towed vehicles, and twenty people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were locked for. Other than that, Catherine Dybly, our newest officer, she started the fourteenth of this month. So she's still in her FTO phase. It's going to be at least probably eight, eight to ten weeks before she's by herself. Bryce Michael graduates the academy December sixteenth, so we'll be getting him back mid-December, which will be nice. We had our night shoot last Tuesday, have the range. We always have one night shoot a year, but we always wait till after the time change so we're not shooting until ten P.M. And making neighbors mad, but. Other than that, I think that's about it. Any questions?
Anybody have anything to the chief? And by the way, for everybody's benefit, we are still looking for dispatch.
Yep. For second applications until, I don't remember, the end of the month, I think. I think the thirtieth, maybe?
Anybody out there that's interested to contact?
It's a split shift.
RPE.
So it's some, a couple of second shifts, a couple of midnights, so, yeah, we're looking.
Thanks, chief. Okay. We don't have area here tonight, but David Dybly. Area plan commission meets next Wednesday. Brian, anything on FEDCO?
Yeah, we met on the tenth. Presented a new slate of board members for twenty twenty-three that was approved by the current board. The Blackadder project, the water line, sewer laterals were complete. The road, road design calls it soil stabilization, but because of a shortage of lime, the paving's delayed. You guys know about the housing study? David talked about that. We're in the process for filling the director's seat. Anything happens there, I'll report to you guys. Other than that, if you have any, any questions, smart report.
Any questions? Thanks. Park Board, Chase?
No report from him.
Park Board didn't meet there. They're, they were listening to some reports from the maintenance director, Anthony Johnson, regarding some equipment purchases for next year. There will be a presentation, a special meeting. Is that scheduled, Shada?
Monday at six.
That's Monday at six?
Mm-hmm.
Discussion on the maintenance room, mechanical room of the city pool. Some things we're going to have to do to go carry forward with that, with the pool. That basically was most of the business. One of the, one of the real pleasure of the things was we got back into having an associate park board member put on the board from the high school. Teton Doran, young lady who's a junior at RHS, will serve this next year as an associate park board member. If you remember, we had two before her, and actually, one of them is now on the school board. So, you know, and his first venture in the government world was as an associate park board member. Mr. Trexler, who was our, if you remember him too, he was a manager of our pool this last year.
Trotter.
Or, sorry, Trotter, Trotter. Ethan Trotter, thank you. So, you know, it's good stuff. Gets these kids a taste for what goes on here. That was pretty much the park board. Nothing, obviously, from Marty's solid waste animal adoption center. Councilman Wilson?
Yes. This report is actually from last month, since I didn't get to present it to the meeting last month. For August, the county line landfill received forty-five thousand twenty-eight tons of waste. And for September, forty-five thousand five hundred sixty-eight, almost five hundred sixty-nine point eight-eight tons. They took in, the solid waste district took in as a result of that nineteen thousand fifty-two dollars for August and nineteen thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars for September. The solid waste district recycling center also shipped out during that time one hundred and thirty tons of recyclables, receiving back eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. They also, from some of their funding, installed a new fire suppression system at the recycling center. The animal adoption center has been primarily working on a new county ordinance with the county commissioners related to dealing with wildlife, particularly domestic animals. And I'm not going to go through the entire ordinance because it's about thirty pages long, but I believe in December, they're looking to have that approved. So we'll have a little more information on that next month.
You said, say wildlife in relation to domestic animals. What does that mean? Somebody's going to domesticate a tiger or something?
Well, it's got a little bit of everything, it seems like. So, for example, vaccination requirements, what wild or exotic animals are or not allowed in the county. What happens with biting incidents, how that's handled by law enforcement, cruelty to animals, on and on and on. Covers pretty exhaustively about everything you can possibly imagine.
Okay. I assume too, and if not- Okay, I assume too, and if, if not, your presence will let them know that we do have ordinances and such to cover some of that stuff that may be a little different than the county.
Okay.
So, please keep that in mind. Any questions for Tom on that? Good stuff, anything else?
No.
Tree Board, Brian?
No report.
Water Board, John?
Yes, we had a water board meeting on the seventh, and the, Derek presented, updated the board on the water plant filler wall project, a new wall has been poured and is ready to be painted once the painters can get around to it. And all the drives have been milled and repaved, and all is completed. And presented update to the board that the deer run water main project is a hundred percent complete. If anybody watched that going on, it was, I, I did quite a bit, I was just a mere nosey neighbor. It was pretty interesting, how they poured all that, it was pretty, just kind of fun to kind of watch every couple of days. And other than that, as Derek sat down here, everything's operating normal, and we had, that's what we want to hear, and. Derek set the wrestling match tonight, and it's go zebras.
Yeah.
Not tiger, zebra.
So, yeah, a couple of those projects, you mentioned the deer run project and the water department wall project, there were a couple, those were a couple of our projects on the whiteboard that we've been able to mark off. Well, you know, we started out in February, and we had sixteen projects on that board. Today, and some of them were gonna be long-term, we knew, and would probably carry over. But our waste treatment plant project might carry over right at the top of the list. And, but it looks like with pushing and pulling and what have you, we're gonna finish up the end of this month and be ready for a, basically, a tour by the boardworks on the twenty-ninth. So that, that's gone pretty well, but there's been, of that group of sixteen, there's been about seven projects come right off that list. And it's, we've got a very good group of folks working, compared to city superintendent wise and chief wise, and helping make these things happen. But it's also taken this long. There's a lot of engineering folks out there, there's a lot of construction folks out there. And in the private sector, we used to say, it takes a while to find somebody who's all meat, not all sizzle. You've heard that? And we've, we've been able to do that, we found some people now we can depend on, this Fox Run project, my gosh. That's the company that's seventy percent veteran employed.
Deer Run.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're around seventy percent veteran employed, and they just, they just knocked it out of the park and worked very closely with the city, and finished about sixty days ahead of time. So we appreciate that kind of effort, but it takes a while to cultivate those kind of relationships.
They were going every day.
Yes, they were, yes, they were. Same thing was with the, down at the water department, we had an issue with the wall, one of the walls, as you know, John, that was.
That's been a while.
Yeah, that was coming, coming down, it was having a problem.
Oh, boy.
And now that, that is complete now, since that report, that is all complete, it's one of the seven that's come off the board. So, you know, we've got, it's time, I'm overdue putting a writing out there that tells where we are at the end of the year. We've gotten a lot of things done, and we've got a new list coming up for next year, so. We just keep going, infrastructure's a huge issue, huge issue. Okay, thanks, John, any questions? Okay. Attorney Perkins, anything from the legal side of things?
Nothing specific, we've been working on some projects with the redevelopment commission and some other matters, and always one or two ordinance violations to show up in court for, but nothing to bring to the council in particular.
Nice of you to mention that, we, the Apache Drive project and the Nickel Plate Trail project, we've had with USI engineers, the engineering firms on those two projects, and those are moving ahead very nicely, so. Thank you for bringing that up. Any questions for our attorney? Okay, Shada, any ADA concerns?
None that have been brought to my attention.
Okay.
That's good.
Yes, that's very good. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. By Goodman, our mind reading here, Goodman seconded by Wilson, those in favor, for adjourn, thank you all.